I'd like to call the meeting to order for the March 2022 Johnson County Board of Trustees meeting. I'm Lee Cross, trustee here at the college. If you'd all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, I'd be thankful.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, and again, welcome to the meeting for this month. Roll call of trustees. I believe I see trustee Laura Smith Everett, Vice Chair Nancy Ingram, and trustee Mark Hamel. Mr. President, I believe Don Ratan and Joy Coaston via Zoom.
That is my understanding. Yep, they're on. Trustees Ratan and...
Okay, affirmative that they're here.
We are here.
And it's...
Yep.
Welcome to the meeting. And trustee Gray Muso is unable to attend this evening. Therefore, we have six in attendance tonight. Our first item on the agenda is awards and recognitions, and I will turn it over to Dr. Bown. Mr. President?
Well, as always, we start our... Very early in the meeting, we start with student spotlight. And as you may all be well aware of the fact that this is Women's History Month, and we thought it would be most important for you to meet a group of our leaders on campus, the executive team of our Student Senate. And I believe, for the first time in history, we have an all-woman leadership team. And so, we thought this would be the perfect time for you to meet them. And so, would you please come up and introduce yourselves and share whatever you'd like to share?
First, thank you so much for the introduction, Dr. Bown. I'm sure, hopefully, I'm a familiar face. I am the president... My name is Shelby Winter, and I'm the president of Student Senate. And, you know, I grew up in the Johnson County area my whole life, so I'll keep it brief.
Good evening. Thank you so much for the recognition. I am Asa Thapa. I serve as the vice president of the Student Senate. I'm an international student from Nepal, and I also serve as a student life ambassador here on campus. I work in Center for Student Involvement, Student Lounge, and Basic Need Center.
Thank you, guys. I am Camille Mullings. I am the treasurer for Student Senate. Also, I'm an international student from Jamaica. I'm also vice chair for service and fundraising, and I'm currently studying nursing here at this college. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mahalit Mullugeda. I'm an international student from Ethiopia, and I'm majoring on liberal arts here in JCC. I'm just planning to transfer to a four-year college. And then, I'm also a parliamentary on for Students Senate. I also work at the Resource Center here in the library. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for having us here. My name is Debra Wairimo. I'm an international student originally from Kenya. I am the secretary for JCCC Student Senate. I am also the head of the Public Relations Committee for JCCC Student Senate, and I double up as an admissions ambassador. This is my second year, so I'm taking computer science. I hope to transfer soon. Most of my life revolves around JCCC, but during my free time, I play chess, I go hiking, I watch movies.
And then, we just wanted to talk a little bit about, you know, how the board has listened to our concerns at Student Senate. So, I know a really big issue that Student Senate wanted to address and work on for this year was mental health. And I thought we... Also, did you want to talk a little bit about it?
Yes.
I thought we were heard when we wanted to have a clinician or some, you know, just some extra support on campus with that.
I remember being the student spotlight last semester in fall 2021. It was on August 19th at 5:00 p.m., regular standard Board of Trustees meeting, where I was asked by one of the trustees that what could be something that we could do as Johnson County Community College? And I said that we need mental health resources and free counseling for students. This semester, spring 2022, we have a licensed counselor on campus for students, starting from February 2022. And this tells everything about JCCC, our Board of Trustees, staff, and everyone, because they care about Cavaliers. And we feel like we are being the voice of the students, because our problems are being heard and it's being addressed. And I'm so glad that it's out there, mental health resources.
And then, we wanted to talk about a couple of events that we put on in the past.
Shelby, so we feel very accomplished and very happy of all the things that we've done in the past, more specifically to do with the events directly connected to Student Senate. One of them being JCCC Gives, in which we raised $1,000. So, 65 families and 16 individuals were able to benefit from that. Trick or treat for kids, 150-plus kids attended that event. So, we feel very motivated to continue. The bar is very high, of course. We have to figure it out for next year, but we're so happy for those accomplishments.
And then, speaking of, you know, figuring out turnover for next year and everything, we're still working on recruitment. I believe we recruited eight new senators last semester, and we recruited two new senators this semester. And now, we're working on elections for the next year. And then, we did want to bring up the issue of library hours a little bit more. Moll, did you want to talk about it?
And the other thing that Student Senate is working on is library hours. So, currently, the library is open from like 7:30 a.m. till 9:00 p.m. So, as we heard from the students, they want to, like, stay longer in the library, because there are some class that end at 8:00 something. So, they want to work on their homeworks and study, like, in libraries. So, they asked for that, so we're advocating for that. Hopefully, we'll achieve it well. Thank you.
What time would you want?
Oh, yeah, we are planning to do it till midnight, maybe, if that is possible.
Talk to Dr. Bown.
They've actually been doing a very good job of advocating for that and working with the appropriate people on campus to see where we can expand hours. And so, they've... They're doing very appropriate leadership.
Also, I used to go to KU campus to do my studying once they closed when I was here, so I do know exactly what you're talking about.
And also, so we're a part of the service and fundraising team as well. So, a part of Student Senate is to, you know, gather the community, get our students, and come together. For this semester, one of our main aim is to provide the students with something that they have not experienced due to COVID-19. So, we thought about doing a spring formal, and with that, that will just bring all students together who had a rough path for the past two years, did not get their spring dance or their prom, and just provide them with that expertise. We also are partnering with Lama Dalalam, and they are... You can tell them about them.
Sure. So, as a service and fundraising committee, our goal is to connect JCCC to the community. And the spring formal, actually, the idea of spring formal is there in bringing all the students together, because the idea is to bring the... To showcase and reflect the diversity that we have on campus. The theme of the spring dance is Around the World in a Night. So, all cultural wearers and all students from all backgrounds are welcome to embrace their culture. We are collaborating with a nonprofit organization called Dalalam. Dalalam is an organization that has been helping relocate and shelter refugees from all over the world to Kansas City, because their goal is to make Kansas City kinder. And to... At this point, where we have humanitarian crisis, I think it is relevant for us to partner with them. All the proceeds will go to the organization, so that we can make Kansas City better.
Well, your students, thank you for coming tonight. I think some of the trustees will have some questions for you, I anticipate. You can put me down as a sponsor for the Around the World in a Night Spring Formal. And Ross Law Firm will do that. Are there any questions for the Student Senate Executive Board? Adam Vice Chair, trustee Ingram?
Yes. Well, my first question is, when is the spring formal?
So, the spring formal is on April 2023. It's a Saturday.
Okay.
From 7:00 p.m. to 10:30 p.m.
Is there an age limit?
No. No. It's open... It is open to students and the community.
Awesome. Good to know. The other thing I would just say, and I'm sure everyone would agree, well, you wouldn't know this particularly, but there is a mask that is sitting in my car that is green for St. Patrick's Day that I failed to bring in, and it says, "I'm smiling under here." And I think we probably all are feeling like... We hope you can see our smiles this evening. It's a pleasure to have you here. So, thank you for all you're doing.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, trustee Ingram. I know that some people online may have questions. We see you. I'm going to go to trustee Laura Smith Everett next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Women, I just want to congratulate you on incredible, unprecedented leadership in many ways. You're, you know, taking categories that we have not seen before, and I, as a fellow woman, am incredibly proud. I don't know if you are aware or ever heard of this, but one of the actual... There's an organization that works to kind of list out what are envi... How can we lower environmental impacts? And it starts with, like, the most impactful, and then goes through 100 things we can do. And actually, I believe it's number seven on the list is educating women, because when women rise up in leadership, they tend to be more community-based, more relational-based, and they share leadership. And by doing that, they can impact their communities much stronger. I carry that with me all the time, because I think, of course, it's much bigger implications than just environmental impact. Women in leadership can really fundamentally change the way we think and communicate and operate. And I can just tell by the things you've listed tonight, by the way each of you took turns after the podium, advocating for each of the issues that you've been working on, that you're already doing that. So, my question back to you is, what is next? What do you think is the thing that you see as the sort of... The way in which you've taken leadership in Student Senate that is important, that you think we need to keep that legacy going with Student Senate, that may be not as traditional as the way Student Senate has operated in the past? And if there's nothing you can think off the top of the head, that was a pretty heady question, so I admit, but I am just in such admiration and enormously proud of you all standing up here tonight and already showing us ways that you're doing things differently.
Well, thank you very much. We truly appreciate that. I think the biggest initiative that we've taken so far is actually having that one-on-one conversation with Dr. Weber. Being able to connect with him also gave us a chance to connect with everyone across campus, because he's like a delegator with our concerns and the issues that we're facing. And even to the compliments that we want to give out, he's the one that connects with us. We meet monthly, and I think that's the biggest impact for us, being able to do what we can do, is being heard. So...
Grateful.
We have a couple more questions. Trustee Joy Coaston, and then trustee Don Ratan.
Thank you, Chairman. Ladies, I just want to say, wow. I am so impressed by everything that you have presented here tonight, and I'm just so proud that we have your leadership and your commitment to making the student experience at JCC better than it already is. I'm also really grateful that mental health is a focus of your attention. It's been a long focus of mine for many, many years. So, I'm grateful that we have others in the community and at our college who are taking that mantle and making sure that we have access to resources for all of the students and everyone who is at JCCC. And I'm just very excited about your spring formal, because it sounds amazing, and the fact that you've put an international focus on your theme is so timely and really visionary. So, I commend all of you for the work that you're doing, and I just hope that you keep it up.
Thank you, trustee Coaston. Trustee Coaston was also in the legislature, where she advocated for mental health. And I believe trustee Ingram sits on the Mental Health Board or advisory board?
Johnson County Mental Health.
Yes. Trustee Ratan?
I just want to say thank you. I love your presentation, and when we were all campaigning, you all were a big presence at several of the events that we were at, including inviting us. So, I just really appreciate your leadership. I encourage you to be leaders, continue to be leaders. I know it takes some risk to balance all of this with your work and home life, but continue to do this great leadership work that you're doing here, because all of you women are going to go out into the world and do great things. I really appreciate your creativity as well. As Joy said, the international theme for the spring fling is great, and that you all are a key part of bringing normalcy or the life back to JCCC. So, thank you so much for everything you do.
Trustee Ratan. Dr. Bown, do you have anything else?
I just, again, you know, because I say it every month, what a highlight it is for me to spend time in general with students, but to get the one-on-one time with the students that come and engage with you in these meetings is every month a highlight for me. And five at one time, you just... It was more than I could handle.
Five times the fun, right?
So, I was five times the fun times five. So, anyways, ladies, thank you very much for your leadership.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The next item we have on our agenda is the open forum. The open forum section of the board agenda is a time for members of the community to provide comments to the board. There will be one open forum period during each regularly scheduled board meeting. Speakers wanting to make public comment via Zoom webinar must register by completing the registration form below by 5:00 p.m. the day before the scheduled Board of Trustees Zoom meeting. Speakers must provide their name, city of residence, name of any group they are representing, the topic of discussion, and a brief, one- or two-sentence summary of the presentation, as well as the email address and phone number the speaker will be using to access the Zoom meeting. Zoom link, conference number will be listed on the JCCC Board Meetings page. Registered speakers should be familiar with Zoom, please, and the functionality before logging on to the Board of Trustees meeting. Registered speakers should wait until they're called upon by the board chair to speak, at which time the recognized registered speaker will be granted electronic access to address the board. Speakers wanting to make public comment in person must register through this form by 5:00 p.m. the day before, or in person 15 minutes before the start of the meeting outside of the room, GEB 137. Each registered speaker is allotted five minutes to speak. If there is a significant number of registered speakers at that time, the time will be reduced for each registered speaker. When addressing the board, we ask, please, the registered speakers should be respectful and civil. You're encouraged to address the individual personnel or student matters directly with the appropriate college department. Insults, profanity, or language that is not appropriate to be aired on live television, offensive comments based on the protected status or class are prohibited, please. The chair of the board has the authority to keep order and impose reasonable restrictions on any disruptive behavior of those participating in the board meeting. Tonight, we have... How many? One. One registered speaker. I will now call County Commissioner Charlotte O'Hara to the podium, please.
How long do I get?
Five minutes, Madam Commissioner.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
It's very nice to be here. Happy St. Patrick's Day.
Good to you.
I just want to note that, yes, this is a very happy day and lots of celebrations, but the Irish heritage is really anchored in tragedy. The reason that there's so many Irish in the United States and Canada is because of the famine in the 1840s, late 1830s. And my family was part of that, and they came in through Canada. And my great-great-grandparents and my great-great-grandmother died very young, and my great-grandfather was two. My great-great-grandfather couldn't take care of him, so a family did step in to help out, and he was raised by that family. So, I want people to understand that the tyranny of... The tyranny that was oppressing the Irish, it was also alive and well in Canada and the United States, because there were many, many times that the Irish need not apply. So, we need to remember that, that there was a lot of persecution against the Irish. And I am here because of the brave family members that I have, that... So, my success is built on the previous generations of successes. I'm also a poet, and I wrote something on the tragedy that happened in Ireland, and it's called "Ireland's Forgotten." Shadows of past forgotten, death alone company, enemy at door. Hearts cold as ash-shrooned hearths where lies no spark. To light flame, to kindle, hope within, fire of youth's desire. None assists those shadows of past, pity them alone, ones forgotten. But I will tell you that they are not forgotten, and that we of the Irish descent do remember them. So, on that basis of tyranny, I'm here tonight to urge the board to back away from their tyranny of requiring masks, as the county commission... And I am here as an individual, not as a representative of the commission. The commission rescinded that public health order for masks one month ago. There's no enforcement. This is theater. We know that when you... When people, as yourselves, are in public, that you're not wearing masks. I mean, it's the same as the Board of County Commissioners. We were at the mayor's Christmas party in the middle of masking children, and none of the commissioners, except for Commissioner Hanslick, none of the other commissioners were wearing masks. So, this really needs to end, and I would really urge you to just please consider ending it tonight. Go forward. The rest of the community is out of mask. This morning, I was begging the commission to come out with absolute certainty that we are not requiring masks for babies in daycare centers. Unfortunately, my motion did not pass. It failed 5 to 2. I will continue to work on that, and I'm here tonight to ask you to... Respectfully asking you to please, please rescind the order. There's no need for these young adults and the staff to be in masks any longer. So, that's my request, and happy St. Patrick's Day.
Happy St. Patrick's Day.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. President, I don't believe there's any other speakers.
That's correct.
The next item on our agenda is the board reports, and we'll start with the Student Senate President Shelby Winter. Welcome back.
Hello again. I know we touched on a lot of topics. Currently, Student Senate is working towards elections, utilizing technology to track attendance, and certain programming events for the semester. So, the majority of general assembly meetings are held in MTC 107, but they're twice when the meeting will be held in MTC 234. General Assembly meets in MTC 107 or 234 every Friday from 12:00 to 1:00 p.m. On the first Friday of every month, GA combines with the inter-club councils meeting. During the GA held on Friday, February 25th, Pickleball Club was approved as a new organization. I met the president, the primary student leader of that organization, Thomas Brewer, and he had a lot of ideas on opening up, like, recreation center spaces, like, more open for students. So... And then, we had a few funding requests. Bollywood Boulevard presented their budget request for Holly, which is a colors festival that will be held April 16th. JCCC Graphic Design Club presented a budget request for their end-of-year networking event. JCCC IDSA presented a budget request for their dessert delight and recognition celebration. And then, JCCC SVA, Student Veterans of America, presented a budget request for a Topgolf outing, which is cool. Upcoming events, the Student Senate Executive Board and two senators will be departing tomorrow morning for the American Student Government Association Conference happening on Saturday in Atlanta. And then, our Student Senate Executive Board and senator elections will be taking applications until midnight of Monday, March 28th. The campaign period will be between March 28th and April 7th, and then elections will be held April 5th through April 7th, with final election results posted April 7th by 5:00 p.m. And then, finally, JCCC's Spring Formal Dance Around the World in One Night will be held Saturday, April 23rd, from 7:00 p.m. to 10:30 p.m. in the Sea Tech Building. Are there any questions for me?
Trustee Laura Smith Everett.
What was the building again? Where the formal's being?
The Sea Tech Building.
Oh, great.
Are there any questions on Zoom? I do not know. Is there a threshold for number of adults that can attend?
Number of adults over 40?
You're talking to a group of people that like pomp and circumstance. I do.
We like supporting you.
Thank you.
Well, Madam President, thank you for being here. I don't see any questions by Zoom.
I'm not hearing any.
Okay. So, thank you again for being here.
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome. Nice leadership. Our next report is from our college lobbyist, Mr. Dick Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. While most people are enjoying spring break, over at the State House, the wheels are beginning to come off the bus. Just this week, we've had more presentations on voter integrity. Just today, over the noon hour, the Senate Tax Committee worked 25 bills into four. Partisan provisos are starting to appear in budget bills. So, we know that we're getting close to the end of the legislative session, because things are starting to get really silly, more so than normal. Let's talk about higher education budgets. The governor recommended $24.5 million of new money for the two-year sector back in her governor's budget recommendations at the beginning of the session. The House budget recommends about $28.4 million in its version of the budget, and the Senate budget recommends just almost the same amount that the governor's budget recommendation comes out with, at about $24.5 million. There's some differences. Some of those differences are in one-time project allocations and in tiered and non-tiered dollars. The House just appropriated new dollars in a big pot. The Senate, however, still divides those out in a tiered and non-tiered formula. My guess is, by the time they get to the college, depending on which budget is finalized through the conference committee process, we'll still see the tiered and non-tiered format. The differences are also in the amounts for capital outlay. The House has more dollars in that particular category than the Senate. The House is still working its budget in committee. In fact, they're coming back at 6:15 this evening, and they're expected to discuss community college projects for the one-to-one match and the challenge grant program. The Senate did not take that up in their version of the budget. The Senate debated its version of the budget yesterday on general orders, and the House will likely do that sometime next week. Community colleges are working to get to play in that one-to-one match game. Presently, universities are only included in that challenge grant application system, the $195 million that's offered through the Department of Commerce. Johnson County Community College is one of seven community colleges to have a matched project for SCDL enhancement. Approximately $2.5 million match for the expansion of that commercial driver's license program is the project that we have included. The total match for seven community college projects is around $38 million, with the bulk of that going to KCK for Career and Technical Education and Behavioral Health Facility and Program. Heather, myself, Jessica Lucas, who represents a community college, and Dan have been meeting with House and Senate leadership and folks in the governor's office to continue to advocate for the community college inclusion in this competitive grant program. Let me give you an update on Promise Act. It's been on general orders in the Senate for most of the session. Right before the first turnaround period at the end of February, it was referred to the Senate Ways and Means Committee for an informational hearing. The Senate Education Chair was required to present to the Senate Ways and Means Committee. Interesting, because it was supposed to be informational, or they call it a hearing, but no one else was allowed to present or offer comments. Another interesting thing that I've not seen in my time in doing lobbying work in the State House since 1991, that's a long time. Senate Ways and Means made amendments to the bill to cap the program and to put a sunset on the program. Then, they returned it to Senate. Kind of a bizarre way of doing business when it's not a public hearing where people can testify or opine. Supposed to be worked on Monday. We'll see. We've had some, just some brief conversations with folks in the House in case we need to get the ball rolling over there. My guess is, things... My guess is things will move on Monday in the Senate, and we'll get it figured out somehow to get those updates to the Kansas Promise Act in play. Driver education update, Senate Bill 215 is another one that we've been very actively engaged on. Yesterday, we had a hearing in the House Education Committee. Jimmy Bowie, once again, from our program over at the college, did a stellar job in representing the college and the program, was able to stand up, answer questions that legislators have that in some cases, some of the state regulators maybe didn't have a clear answer on. So it was great to have someone representing the college and helping move that along. The college will be able to receive reimbursements for driver's ed from the Transportation Highway Safety Fund as a result of our engagement. We've been teaching that class for quite a while. We're one of a number in Johnson County. Either commercial, public school, community colleges is us that offer a driver education program, but because the Department of Education had classified us as a commercial institution, we weren't allowed to collect dollars or apply for dollars based on the students that we have taking those courses. With the amendment that we got put into place, that will now be able to happen. That bill was passed out of the House Committee and will be on general orders in the House. It also passed the Senate 40 to zero, so things look good there. Late-breaking action in the Senate Tax Committee, literally before this meeting opened up and started at about 4:15, the Senate Tax Committee went back into session and brought back House Bill 2315, which was included or amended to include $1 million in tax credits per community college, a 60% tax credit that's non-refundable, that can be used for capital outlay and building. And the entire program is capped at $7 million. So thinking about that, there's about 26 institutions that could potentially participate in this program. It's capped at $1 million per institution with a $7 million total cap. So that means if we have the opportunity to utilize this piece, if it is passed in the tax plan that was put forth this afternoon by the Tax Committee, we'll need to get right on that because it will be very competitive and probably will go away pretty quick. But that just happened literally minutes ago, and that's kind of the stage that we're at in the session. Things are happening with no notice. Like I said, we had 24 bills that were thrown into, 25 bills that were thrown into four bills in the Senate Tax Committee today. Who knows what the ultimate plan for how those get passed, or if they get vetoed, or where they end up in the conference committee process is kind of where we're at. So like I said earlier this week, there was no plan for tax bills that were being passed. We may have one now. It's unsure. We've got them packaged together, at least on the Senate side, and the budgets aren't done, but they're closer to the end of first adjournment than we've been, and hopefully they'll be wrapped up and out of here by April 1, which is when the legislature goes on its spring break. So, Mr. Chair, I think I would stop there. That kind of catches you up to speed to the minute, if you will, where we're at in the legislative process.
Carter, thank you. Thank you, as always, for your report and your work. Any questions for Mr. Carter? I know we have one by Zoom. I'm going to go to trustee Smith Everett first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dick, thank you, as always, for your by-the-minute presenting sometimes. Do you like roller coasters in general? Do you find amusement parks fun? Because I feel like part of your job is riding a roller coaster about this time of year.
I've been doing this for so long, I'm sort of numb to the process. I just go with the flow and wait for things to happen and kind of, you know, we usually are able to predict where things are going to end up. It's getting a little bit more difficult to do that, but yep, we're at that point where things are just by the minute.
Well, thank you for your minute-by-minute update. I have two questions for you. You spoke about the funding, and I just wanted to provide a little context there, especially for our new trustees, but you were talking about the $24 million allocated in the governor's budget. And you said that there was a non-tiered option format and then a tiered format, and we've traditionally been tiered funded, at least the last several years, especially under this governor. And I just want to clarify if that's correct, and that's historically the way we've been funded?
I think that that goes back quite a ways to the Career and Tech Ed passage, and so we do have courses that are in the tiered funding and non-tiered funding categories. I think just because the House has decided to kind of lump sum that money, it will still be divided accordingly based on a formula that is distributed through the supportive regions. And I should also note that that $24.5 million that I'm talking about, those are new dollars. That's not the total allocation for community colleges. Those would just be new dollars over and above the existing budget lines.
Thank you. That was actually my follow-up to that, if that was new dollars or if that was allocated about the same as last year. So even though it would be a lump sum, you're presuming in the state of the bill right now that it would be in a tiered format once it actually gets?
It comes to us in a block grant, and all those changes happen internally here. They're just using different terms.
Okay. The other question, I just wanted to clarify that I heard you write, you said that there was an amendment today to actually sunset the Promise Act in total. Is that correct? Did I hear you correctly?
So that happened last, I can't remember what day it happened. It happened recently, might have been Tuesday of this week. Things all run together at this point in the session. Thursday of last week, I believe, is when it maybe actually did happen. And it would put a sunset on. I can't remember the year that it sunsets, but the more important thing is that three years out, it would be, we would have to stop granting scholarships for the program. I think it's fiscal year, it's either fiscal year '27 or calendar year '27, and so you have to think back then, three years, because that's about how long that program takes to get those students through when you're issuing those scholarships. I think the sunset comes off in conference committee, I really do, but I need to mention it because that's kind of where we're at. That's what the Senate Ways and Means Committee did in their action the other day. And again, some would challenge whether or not it was legal for them to do that.
Okay, so it actually passed with that clause in it. That's what I was trying to?
It passed out of the second committee, so it's still back on general orders in the Senate. It has not passed out of the Senate yet.
Okay. Thank you. That concludes my questions, and I, again, just want to thank you for the level of detail you provide us, and I wish you the best on the last few weeks before spring break, and I hope you enjoy the roller coaster ride.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Trustee. Did you want to add anything, Dr. Bound? To the next question? I believe we had, was it trustee Ratan? Trustee Joy Coeston, excuse me, I'm half-blind.
That's okay. That's okay. I appreciate getting acknowledged at some point. It's a good thing. Dick, thanks so much for your work in the State House. It is a roller coaster, and I so appreciate your being there. I wanted to ask you about the amendment that you mentioned about the competitive dollars that the community colleges could go after, $7 million, and you said that that would be happening fairly quickly if it passed. Can you speak a little bit more about what the competitiveness of that looks like and how we might compete?
So there's $195 that has been assigned to the Department of Commerce for a challenge grant that universities are allowed to participate in. There are a number of discussions going on about what that might actually look like in its final format. Some legislators would like to take that money out of the Department of Commerce and just appropriate it. There are others that, there's a number of ways that it could work, so it's not in its final stages yet. We're just trying to get to be able to play in the ballgame. And so there are seven community colleges that have matched projects that are ready to roll if we are allowed to participate. And so that's the piece right there. And so figuring out how we can participate in that pool of dollars that's allocated for higher education will be great.
Okay.
And that's the angle that we're working on.
All right. Thank you so much.
Any other questions? I have a couple of comments and questions for Mr. Carter.
I just wanted to know if he has a bill number on that, that challenge grant.
There's no bill, there's no bill number. It's a grant that resides in the Department of Commerce. I think it was part of the Spark process initially, but it's money that's been allocated to Department of Commerce to oversee and issue as a grant. But right now, it's being discussed in the budget bill, or it will be. It will likely be discussed at 6:15 p.m. this evening. So normally, I stick around for most of the meeting, but I'll probably be signing off so that I can, in fact, I've got it up over here on the other monitor, just waiting for them to come back.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Trustee. Mr. Carter, with respect to Senate Bill 532, as someone who's worked on both sides of the aisle, mostly one for 20 years, if someone really wants to put a political party next to someone's name in local elections, I wish them good luck. Having had to try to turn out voters in August and November for much of my life, I wish them luck. I hope it works for them, but I don't think either side will understand the impact that that'll have on elections, on one person in Overland Park expressing an opinion. But what does it mean? It hasn't been worked, Dick.
Mr. Chair, if I might clarify also, many entities, many municipalities specifically have nonpartisan elections. I believe the trustee elections are nonpartisan as well. Anytime that a letter designation or anything that would designate a party affiliation next to a candidate's name automatically makes that entire election, that race partisan. And so I think that's the concern. It has not been worked. I don't know that it will be, but it's something that I'm certainly paying attention to and could have potential impact even on the trustee elections.
Well, again, I don't think it'll have the impact that partisans think it will have. I think it's been a good thing in nine years, being on this board, being challenged to be nonpartisan was one of the most difficult things I had to learn in my life, and focusing people on the issues and governing rather than... I'm elected by all of Johnson County. I know this is not directly for you, but thank you for the opportunity to say this. And unless there's any other questions for Mr. Carter, we'll move on. Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Carter. Our next report is from the Faculty Association President, Dr. James Leicher. Excuse me, Andrea Vu. And just so you know, Dr. Bound expressly said Andrea Vu will be coming to speak. I said, oh, yeah, I grew up with her in Lawrence.
That's right, we did.
Andrea, I'm so sorry.
We are both from Lawrence. No worries, it's on the thing that way. Dr. Leicher is at a funeral, so he was not able to be here, so I am here in his place. So it was kind of a last-minute change about. So again, I am Dr. Andrea Vu, hello. An associate professor of political science, vice chair for the Department of History and Political Science, and a secretary/recorder for the Faculty Association. So when I was here last November, and, you know, I talked about working from Lawrence, and I failed to mention a key thing about me, which is I earned an associate's degree of liberal arts from JCCC as a community college student, and then I went on from JCCC to complete my bachelor's, master's, and doctoral degrees. So well, and then also well in graduate school, I was an adjunct professor here as well. So I have an interesting background with this college. But one of the things I really love about this college is how many people or how many folks we have that work here that were former students. I think there were three of us in my faculty lens class alone. So JCCC was the foundation to our future, and we in turn can be part of the college's mission to transform lives and strengthen communities. We're here part of creating that sense of belongingness that will inspire people to come back. And so I just think that's really awesome. To that end, I would like to highlight some often overlooked piece of the Foundation for Student Success, which is the library. So over the last two years, the library has strived to provide equitable access to library services and to support to students. They are available to meet with students in person, online, day or night, for almost 80 hours per week. In addition, they have created interactive tutorials, videos, and a frequently asked questions page to assist students in off-hours and also to assist students that just prefer those mediums. During the pandemic, the library experienced a huge growth in demands for services, and they've responded with innovative supports for faculty and students. So copyright licensing and permission services obtain permissions or licenses for content in hundreds of courses that were previously taught face-to-face, and it has been a key in facilitating the removal of test questions and other content from external websites that undermine academic honesty. In addition, our copyright librarian, Mark Swales, enabled JCCC to present all of its performing arts series and student activities online by managing the rights for all the compositions, recordings, and broadcasts. Barry Bailey has worked alongside well over 10 departments around campus, such as the Science and Math Resource Centers, the Success Advocates, and Continuing Education, to onboard them into the live app system, which helps facilitate off-site communication and onsite space management. And then Jessica Tipton has been learning how to integrate new technologies into online and face-to-face classes and partnering with faculty to support their teaching. She educates students on how to evaluate sources, cite sources, the library resources that are available, and she also assists with research projects, literature reviews, and variable identification in those kind of research projects. So the library and academic student support services more generally, academic and student support services more generally, are yet another thing that I love about JCCC. Our commitment to supporting all of our students' success, which we demonstrate by ensuring we have the necessary resources and personnel in place. Next, I wanted to briefly speak briefly about communication and responsiveness. I and numerous others appreciated the planning and prior heads-up on lifting the potential change to the mask policy on April 4th. I am someone who does better with advance notice so that I can plan and adapt, and the communication of that potential change has enabled me to do those exact things. I also appreciate the decision to wait and see until we see what the impact of spring break is on the spread before going through with changes to the policy. Personally, I think it's a great example of effective communication. And I also would like to ask you to stick to the originally planned date. Again, just because rapid change, people don't necessarily handle well, and it would be very difficult for people to take that on right before we come back from break. JCCC recently sent a large group of staff, faculty, administrators to the Kansas Leadership Center's Your Leadership Edge workshop. The workshop educates attendees about adaptive leadership and the ways in which everyone, regardless of their position, can be a leader. They also host regular forums, such as the Tough Conversations on Race and History panel in September 21, which Dr. Leicher was a panelist for. I just want to note that I happen to be one of the folks that JCCC sent to the workshop, and I really thank everybody that was part of that decision, and I really thank everybody for that opportunity to go and give... So I learned quite a lot about enhancing shared governance, communication, and then also responsiveness from that. And other people, the college attendees that I've spoken with about it, also felt like they got a lot out of that workshop, so that was very helpful, and thank you. As it relates to communication and responsiveness, sometimes employees can feel like their voices are not heard. Maybe they were not presented with an opportunity to give input on decisions that impacts their work. Maybe they were asked and openly shared, but it feels like their input was ignored or they were chastised for giving it. It can be frustrating for folks when they share input, it is seemingly ignored, and then an undesirable outcome occurs that could have been resolved or prevented had someone been responsive to their input. Employees want to know that they were heard, and explanations and responsiveness can help enable that. At the KLC workshop, I identified a commitment to student success as a common value of folks at this college, and I truly believe that. We are all here for that. That's our purpose here. While we may disagree at times on the best way to achieve that goal, as an organization, if we work together through the process of shared governance, we can all become more responsiveness to input from around the college. Finally, I'm going to end on some faculty highlights, but I have to confess there are quite a few, so bear with me. Dr. Ty Edwards, who is a professor of history, the director of the Kansas Studies Institute here on campus, and also the current chair of the Academic Branch Council, is the incoming president of the Association of Kansas Historians and will begin her reign next academic year. As part of her duties, she will be bringing the association's annual conference to JCCC in 2023, something we have not actually had here since 2017, when Dr. Leicher was the president of that organization. Dr. Craig Butler, who is an assistant professor of education, has been developing and managing the Center for Future Educators here at JCCC, which is already serving so many students. I wish I had a good number for you, but it's just several sections worth of students, so you can imagine the numbers there. The center is focused on recruiting future educators and increasing the diversity of our current education. of our current education students, ensuring students have a solid foundation in pedagogy and equitable educational practices, and encouraging students' attendance at research conferences and their transfer to four-year universities. They have six $800 scholarships for education students to serve as ambassadors to area school districts to recruit potential education students to JCCC. In addition, the center is partnering with Emporia State to host a JCCC ESU Buzz into Education Day at JCCC, which is, will bring in more than 350 students to the campus to engage with area superintendents, current administrators, former students who are now teachers, and award-winning teachers. I'm very excited about the work of Dr. Butler, that the work that he and the center are doing. I know he's poured his time, energy, and heart really into that, all while teaching a full load and doing the more traditional types of service work, such as serving on several search committees. And he's only an assistant professor, so it's quite a lot for an assistant professor to take on, and I just think it's great. Perla Weaver, who is an Associate Professor of Political Science, I mean, sorry, Computer Science and a wonderful mentor to our CSIT students, recently hosted a Computer Science Teacher Mentor Day at JCCC that brought 30 to 50 local K-12 teachers to our campus to engage with tech startups and colleagues in doing innovative work in recruiting, mentoring, and training future computer scientists. Dr. Amanda Glass, an Associate Professor of Chemistry and the co-advisor for JCC's Gender and Sexuality Alliance alongside Associate Professor Tanya Hughes of Film and Photography, has brought Safe Zone Training to JCCC. Safe Zone is a voluntary, evidenced-informed LGBTQ+ awareness and allyship training. This semester, she has led several rounds of training the trainers for a group of 15 volunteers, both faculty and staff volunteers. And later this month, she, Tanya, and others will be facilitating a training for the Communication Studies Department, who, to our delight, has graciously agreed to provide feedback on facilitator communication. Multiple other campus units have already expressed an interest in participating in this program, so I'm sure we're going to continue to hear more about this wonderful thing. And lastly, if I can take a moment to toot my own horn, I have recently been elected the co-Vice President of the Johnson County League of Women Voters. As you likely know, the league regularly partners with JCCC to host the JCCC Board of Trustees Candidate Forums that are moderated by our own Dr. Terry Easley-Geraldo. And they also as well do candidate forums for other local elections. So just very engaged in the local community. As a member of the league's board, I look forward to continuing education and engagement efforts. A value, I believe, is shared by JCCC, the league, and myself as well. So those are just some of the highlights of JCC faculty, as it's kind of impossible to highlight everybody because there's a lot of people doing great things here. But it does give a little window into how committed faculty are to student success and engagement and the ways in which they live those values. So I really thank you for your time. This time, I will not run away.
Any questions for Professor Vieux?
I have a comment.
Yes, go ahead, Trustee Ingram.
If you want to call on the people.
Sure, is there anybody online? May I ask?
There are people online.
Trustee Ingram, I have some comments and questions too.
Well, great report. Thank you very much. And I think among the many things that you talked about, and I'm sure all of us could sit here and listen to all of the different accolades for our faculty, you know, that's why we're here. We love hearing good stories about student success and you all as well. But I did want to thank you particularly for giving credit to some of the people that we may not see and their flexibility. I think that's really important. And I think one of the things that has struck us as we've all gone through the pandemic is how in the world will we ever thank people for all that they have done? So I really appreciate you bringing that additional thank you to us. And then the other thing, you know, I'm thrilled to pieces when I hear about us being a convenor of anything in this county. I think that's extremely important, so I want to recognize that as well. And then the Center for Future Educators. You know, we've got an educator right here. You know, I didn't, I'm not focused in on that. So it's good to hear those kinds of things that we are not accustomed to hearing too sometimes.
Just to be fair, it really, I think it just started this year. So it's a very new initiative, and it's, he hit the ground running, and it is just taking off.
Well, and so many times we hear about things. It is communicated. But, you know, until we heard that focus, I think I don't always, you know, connect and realize. We all know how much is going on here. But it's really appreciated that you're bringing some of these things to us this evening.
Thank you. I will take a note for future reports.
Well, they would have to agree. It is a board. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Ingram. Trustee Hamlin.
Actually, I'm asking if you can educate me a little bit. You said equitable library access, and I was curious how that differs from equal library access?
Well, equitable in the sense of, like, everybody can access the library, but the equitable part maybe comes in that not everyone can physically come to the campus. So making sure that the resources that we might not normally provide face to face, we are also providing in a virtual format, which maybe pre-pandemic, people didn't necessarily, weren't as in tune to because there wasn't as much of a need. So like, as the need changed and the shift moved virtual, there was some issues with people being and unable to access resources because they were not coming to campus.
So you're saying we just added in online resources?
To me, and I'm not a librarian, so I don't want to speak for them, per se. But I guess the way I see this is some of these online resources that they've added in are a lot of labor. So like, reformatting PDFs or, you know, setting up. I know that they have talked to our department about setting up library resource pages for a class. So professors might reach out to them and say, hey, normally I used to teach this class face to face. I'm teaching it online now. I need a website where they can easily hit all these resources we have. And so they would go in and build like a website along with the faculty member or something like that. So just kind of things like that is really what. I think there, I guess what I don't want to do is downplay what the work involved in making that transition, right? Because it was a lot of work.
And it's more than just a matter of, as I understand it, and correct me if I'm wrong, anybody in the room, it's more than just making them available online. They also have to be compliant from an ADA standpoint. If we think about how resources are available online, if I have visual impairment, if I'm blind, if I have limited eyesight, how things are brought out to provide that access is also part of what we're, not only are we doing it, but we're also obligated to do it.
And one other piece I would just add to that, if I might, going back to the copyright and permissions. In face-to-face classes, I can pop in a, you know, a DVD or whatever and show a movie to my class. That's not as possible in an online forum because there's copyright permissions that need to be granted before you can show things. So there was just a lot of work with transitioning some of those classes into the virtual format and maintaining, you know, kind of upholding the copyright law of access to those materials. And then also, in some cases, professors are using VHS tapes, and they need to be converted into a digital format.
Trustee Hamlin, does that conclude?
Yeah, I will say for disabilities, I mean, that's something we have to do for equal access. Okay, all right, thank you.
You won't?
Thank you.
I know, Trustee, I think it's Costin. Costin, I have a short memory.
Hey, thanks. I was just going to chime in about the equitable issue and talk about some of the things that Dr. Bound referenced in terms of making sure we have accessible resources for people who are hard of hearing, who might be deaf, who might have learning disabilities. There are a number of things that might not allow us to open up the resources enough to people who would need to have extra services. So I appreciate that explanation by Dr. Bound. And I just wanted to thank Dr. Vieux for being here tonight. And I also want to just point out that one of the things that you said about perhaps we're not listening as much to the faculty as we should or maybe communicating as much as we should in a way that's meaningful. I'd just like to see ways that we can improve that. So thank you for at least speaking up to that issue. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'll add, if I may. Congratulations on your election to the League of Women Voters. That's exciting. With respect to library hours, we just had the Student Senate Executive Board mention that they'd like longer hours. What do you think of that?
Oh, no.
For our committed students. Welcome to the board.
Yeah. I mean, honestly, I don't know that much about library hours. So that's why, to me, I think if the students are saying they need more library hours, then my default would be to be responsive to that need that they're identifying. But I don't know if maybe there's staffing issues or whatever behind the scenes. I'm not really, I'm not, that's not my, that's about my pay level, I guess, is the way to say that. So, but I would say, listening to what the students are asking for in terms, because when, like, and I wish they were still here because I was just so happy to hear about all the stuff they're doing. But people go to the student senators to say, hey, we have this issue, please help us. And then they will come here and say, hey, we have this issue. So to me, when I hear one student saying it, I always think, okay, who are the, there are probably other people in the mix thinking the same thing. And so my default would be to listen to the student senate on that, but.
Thank you for that. And thank you for your input on communication. I mean, some of that might be directed at me as some of my fellow trustees might say. So when you speak up, that helps us know we're not maybe doing as well as we could.
Well, and I didn't want to, I don't, I think one of my concerns was I didn't want to like, call people out or whatever the phrase is there, right? I just think in a general sense, we can all think of like, let's say I'm on, I'll give you another good example of effective communication. The Assessment Council and the Office of Assessment is, actually, the Office of Assessment is currently looking to replace Dr. Sherri Barrett. So they're going through a search. So Sherri and her office sent an email to the entire Assessment Council, I happened to be on that, asking us to get input on what they want to hear from the new director. Like, what are the things they're looking for in a new director? So we collected that from our divisions, and then we gave that communication back to the office, and we talked about it as a council. And then the people that were on the search committee representing the council were able to work that into like, search committee questions. So they actually actively reached out to people to ask for input. And then when they received the input, they thought, hey, how can we use this to make a better search process?
Well, I know this is you, that a number of our administrators have been busy having their own home lives and the pandemic in their own right. And so I thank you for raising the issue because I personally get to witness now fairly close with Dr. Bound as Chair. They work really hard, and there are full-speed mistakes or actions made. I don't know that anybody's. But you, and in fact, I'm sitting in this chair in part because of you and your colleagues. So I hope you take that as some input. And I want to personally and publicly thank you for your grace for so many years, all the times, however many different things, I forgot your name. Your sister was closer in age to me.
She was, that's true.
And so your grace and kindness has been appreciated. And that concludes my questions or remarks, unless there's anybody else.
Great, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good one.
The next item on our agenda is the Johnson County Education Research Triangle. That's a presentation supposed to be made by Trustee Musil, who is not here this evening. I will report, Mr. President, that J-Cert did not meet, as you're aware. We do have, I have some update on revenue from Mayor Peggy Dunn that I'm still on the emails. Revenue for this year, the first two months, is up 16.6% from last year. And that's good, some $600,000 up from this time, February of 2021. I have, as committed to Trustee Musil, I've emailed Mayor Dunn and the others on J-Cert to have him on the emails. And I wanted to make a record so he knew that that happened. Our next meeting, Mr. President, is, members of the board, is at K-State Leitha. That meeting's been put off for two years at K-State Leitha. April 27, 2022, 8:00 a.m. And anyone's welcome to join. Of course, Trustee Musil will be there.[1459.99] And anyone's welcome to join, of course, Trustee Musil will be there. But that concludes my report. Are there any questions?
I was just thinking, Mr. Chair, is it coincidental that it's now coming back to K-State Olathe now that Trustee Musil is back on Research Triangle Committee? I'm just, I just wanted to make that.
Well, I think they were waiting for him, and I will say, since he's not here, to embarrass him. He was the EMC at the Wabash Cannonball, and I have that cup here, too, in pen, and he did a fabulous job, he was hilarious. And I'm thrilled to death, of course, I'm KU, and I love KU, but related to half of Kansas, and I love K-State, too. So he is a remarkable K-State alum, I'm thrilled he gets to have that meeting, because that campus needs promotion, and they're good strategic partners of ours. I'll talk all night, unless anybody else has anything else, I will move on.
I'm ready.
Trustee Ingram will be next with the Kansas Association of Community College Trustees Report. Thank you, Trustee Ingram.
Keeping in mind, my report is a very short one this month. KACC will have a short meeting following the PTK luncheon, which is scheduled for April 1st, and I believe you were attending that, as well as I am in Junction City. The agenda that we will have after we conclude the luncheon will be very short, as I mentioned, and it will include a legislative update, as Dick Carter suggested. Adjournment is April 1st, and that is the day that we are in Junction City. The next quarterly meeting is scheduled for Colby. I believe in the past I have suggested that it was going to be Fort Scott, but there is a concern in Fort Scott. We are moving that meeting on June 3rd and 4th to Colby, just to let my fellow colleagues know that, that is the first weekend in June. I did attend the K-Bor meeting yesterday, and as always, it's always really interesting, but I think the one celebration that we could have, perhaps, is that the Kansas Department of Ed and the Kansas Board of Regents are meeting together to have a graduation task force committee, and at the very end, they suggested that community colleges are involved in that conversation. So Heather Morgan was asked to be participating in that, and I feel like that's a real victory for us, to have someone from the community colleges, so just wanted to mention that specifically. I know Heather is still in Topeka, I spoke to her right before our meeting. Dick referred to the meeting at 6:15 this evening, and Heather was planning to attend that, so they're all advocating very, very hard on behalf of community colleges. And I will end finally with Community College Month is April, so keep that in mind, we need to celebrate, but April is Community College Month, and we look forward to hearing more about things going on on our campuses. And that concludes my report.
Trustee Ingram, thank you.
You're welcome.
I think I shook hands with Bill Gates one time in Seattle in 2013, and I was struck by the phrase I learned at ACCT of the community college movement. Do we use that at KACC? I haven't been that active with.
I don't feel like we do right now, no.
I like those words, so.
Community college.
I just thought I'd share that with you.
I will make a note of that. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Trustee Ingram on the Kansas Association of Community College Trustee Report? Seeing none, we move forward to the next item on our agenda is For the Foundation by Trustee Smith Everett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can I ask a clarifying question about the agenda? Last week, or last month, sorry. Trustee Ratan presented the foundation report. I didn't know if we were alternating, or was it just because of her absence tonight? I just didn't know.
Well, that's my fault, I'm sorry to not make that clear. I don't know, I think it's probably up to you all, or you can flip a coin for it.
I wanted to be aware, I realized late this evening that I would be presenting, and that's perfectly fine, and I will do that, I just didn't know in the future if we were going back and forth, or how we.
If I may, in my experience, the years I served as a liaison, I frankly either let, I think it was Trustee Ingram or Trustee Snyder do it, if they wanted to, and usually I did it, just by way of example.
Okay. Well, we can discuss that offline another time, I just wanted to put it out there, so I didn't forget.
I'm sorry for not making that clear.
No, that's okay, that's not you, I should have noticed the, my name on that agenda item earlier. Thank you very much. The recent foundation meetings for the past month have been in the 2022 Johnson County Year of the Year Selection Committee, has met on Thursday, February 17 via Zoom. The special committee met to review nominations submitted for this year's Johnson County Year of the Year Honoree. This committee meets annually, consists of the college president, trustee chair, vice chair, foundation board president, some enchanted evening chairs, the college VP of Institutional Advancement, and foundation board representative. The committee's 2022 Johnson County Year of the Year selection will be officially announced later this.
Month.
Month.
Or beginning of April.
Thank you.
I verified with Kate earlier today.
Thank you very much.
Probably not later this morning.
No, not later this morning.
Even globally.
I was thinking that out. And will be the honoree at some enchanted evening on Saturday, November 12. The foundation board development committee, chaired by past president Susie Parker, met on Thursday, February 24, and reviewed multiple recommendations for the new JCCC Foundation Board Directors and Members. Board Development Committee members are now working with foundation staff to communicate with the new director and new member nominees, and a final slate of proposed new foundation directors and members will be presented at the April Foundation Board of Directors meeting. So we will report on that after our meeting this month. Upcoming meetings, we have the Foundation Executive Committee, which will be meeting on the 22nd, next Tuesday, and update on the Foundation Executive Director search, with the recent departure of Rob Wyrick, who served as the Foundation Executive Director. The executive director position was posted in late February and will remain open until March 21. The position description and application process can be found on the JCCC Careers webpage. Kate Allen, Vice President of Institutional Advancement, will lead the selection process, and we are confident that there will be a number of qualified candidates to consider. That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Trustee. Any questions for Trustee Smith Everett? I'll just ask, did you, which institution hired Mr. Wyrick?
Olathe Health.
Olathe Health.
He returned.
He returned to Olathe Health.
Yes.
He was there before he came here.
I'm glad for them. Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you, Trustee Smith Everett. Our next report is Collegial Steering. I will say that we have not met yet, subject to the information I have, we'll meet next month on April 7 at 4:00 p.m. The next item on our agenda is the committee reports, are the committee reports. I've asked Trustee Ingram, our vice chair, to begin. My plan is to rotate who presents committee of the whole reports, beginning with the officers, and then offering it up to each individual trustee. If they want to, they can certainly pass, but I frankly do not want to read it every month, and I know Trustee Musil will often labor to do it, so at this time, I'll turn it over to Trustee Ingram.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The committee of the whole minutes are found on the board packet on page 1 through 14. Committee of the Whole meeting was held by Zoom webinar format at 8:30 a.m. on Monday, February 28, 2022. An update was presented on the development of the Strategic Planning Goal Number Two, which is Advanced Diverse and Strategic Partnerships. The goal to champions Kate Allen and Lisa Waldman, and goal to strategy co-chairs Maryanne Mattos, Andrew Lutz, Debbie Rulo, Emily Bearden, Jody Dietz, and Jeff Hoyer, all presented. Thomas Hurd, the next item was the Juneteenth Committee Outcomes. Thomas Hurd, Director of HR Services, provided an update from the Juneteenth Committee. It is recommended that Juneteenth be celebrated in both February and June of each year. Details are included in the board packet. There will be a wall of history planned in February of 2023, and a week of activities in June. The next item was employee benefits, of which there are five recommendations. Dr. Leslie Harden, Vice President, Human Resources, introduced Michelle Oldy and Matt Wheeler with Holmes Murphy, who provided a summary of the JCCC medical plan renewal. The summary included an overview of the compliance and healthcare landscape, plan distribution and utilization, and rate changes for the next benefit plan year. As a result, as I mentioned, we do have a number of recommendations, and I will go to the first one, which is regarding dental insurance. It is the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the proposal from Delta Dental as our single provider for the employee group dental insurance for a period beginning June 1, 2022, through December 31, 2023, and I will make that motion.
Second?
The motion has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I wanted to discuss the classrooms.
Okay, very.
Get that out, if you can.
Good, I think that's coming down the road here.
Oh, sorry.
With respect to the dental insurance, Mr. Trustee, do you have any? All those in favor, the motion has been moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. Trustee Ingram.
Thank you. The second recommendation is regarding vision insurance. It is the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to establish a contract subject to review by college council for the employee group vision insurance with surancy for the period June 1, 2022, through December 31, 2025, and again, I will make that motion.
Second. The motion has been, wait, can the chair make a second? Is there, yes, thank you, we have confirmation from Kelsey Nazar. The motion has been moved and seconded, any discussion? Any discussion? I will say that I asked Trustee Ingram to read all these out in the spirit of transparency, so it is my fault.
Happy to do it.
I think. Go ahead.
No, I was gonna say, I think at one year we did, we combined some of them, I wasn't sure if that was.
Yeah, I've seen that.
Not allowed, or not, but that's fine, I'm glad to know that it was all your fault, and that's why we're doing it.
It's all my fault. All those in favor, please say yea.
Yes.
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 All those opposed, say nay. Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. Trustee Ingram.
Certainly. The third recommendation is for the Employee Assistance Program. It is the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to establish a contract subject to review by college council for the Employee Assistance Program with Deer Oaks for the period June 1, 2022, through May 31, 2027, at a total expenditure not to exceed $43,000. Mr. Chair, I will move to accept this recommendation.
Second?
Motion has been moved and seconded, any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I cannot remember, I wondered if someone was available, just remind us what this program does.
Mr. President.
It wasn't clear from the description, I apologize, thank you.
Hi, I'm Leslie Harden, Vice President for Human Resources. The Employees Assistance Program actually offers counseling services out in the community for our staff, they can call and get free services through that. It also provides us with training opportunities, financial wellness opportunities, things that we can offer here on campus as well.
Thank you, I appreciate that clarification.
You're welcome.
And for all faculty and staff.
Yes.
Thank you, Vice President Harden. Any other questions, any comments, concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
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 Those opposed, please say no. Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. Trustee Ingram.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'm going to go ahead and interject right here as well, that, you know, we kind of moved through some of these quickly, but all of the accompanying information is in the board packet, and the reason for Committee of the Whole is to have the opportunity to ask questions about these, so although it may seem like we're going through them pretty quickly, we've had a lot of discussion regarding those at Committee of the Whole.
Trustee Musil usually explains that, I thank you for explaining.
Nope, I'm just happy to include that right now, I'm the one reading them and going pretty quickly here, so.
You're doing fine, I think.
A fourth recommendation regarding life and accidental death and dismemberment insurance and short-term disability coverage was presented next. It is the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to renew the contract subject to review by college council for the employee life and accidental death and dismemberment insurance and short-term disability coverage, with the standard for a period beginning June 1, 2022, through January 1 of 2025, and I will make that motion.
Motion has been moved, I think Trustee Ingram has moved, and Trustee Costin, as I heard, has seconded. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yea.
Yea.
All those opposed, please say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Trustee Ingram.
Yes, the fifth, number five, is Flexible Spending Account and Health Reimbursement Account Administration. It is the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to renew the contract subject to review by college council for the provision of flexible benefit and health reimbursement account administration with ASI Flex for a period beginning June 1, 2022, through May 31, 2023, at a total expenditure not to exceed $16,000, and I will make that motion.
Any second.
Second?
The motion has been moved and seconded, any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes unanimously. Trustee Ingram.
Okay, our sixth and final recommendation regarding employee benefits deals with the plan year, and basically, this allows for the coordination with the flexible spending plan, and basically extends the contract from 12 to 18 months in order to do so. It is the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to extend Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas City contract through December 31, 2023, in order to move the benefit plan year to the calendar year, and I will make that motion.
Second. Motion has been moved and seconded, any discussion? Any discussion? Wasn't it Blue Cross and Blue Shield, Mr. President, that we worked with with respect to the incentives to vaccinate our faculty and administration, our staff?
Yes, it was a result of a rebate, do I remember? Yeah.
I'm sure you thanked them, I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank them, and to your administration, and everyone who worked to make that happen, so I don't know if it's appropriate there or not, but I wanted to comment on that. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, please say no. Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously.
Okay, the next item of order was Ms. Rachel Lear's Associate Vice President, Financial Services CFO, presented the college's annual financial ratio analysis, including the calculation of the composite financial index. She then presented an update on banking services slash signature authority, which does include a recommendation. She reported that at the May 2020 meeting, the Board of Trustees approved the establishment of a contract for banking services with U.S. Bank. The contract term was for one year, renewable for four additional years in one-year increments. Based on the officers of the Board of Trustees for 2022, the following individuals will be listed as authorized signers on the college's accounts held at U.S. Bank. That would be Lee Cross, Chair of the Board of Trustees, Laura Smith Everett, Treasurer of the Board of Trustees, Dr. Andrew W. Bound, President, and the recommendation is as follows. It is the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to designate the aforementioned individuals as authorized signers on the college's accounts, and I will make that motion.
The motion has been moved and seconded.
I can, no, we need a second.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
It has now been seconded.
Motion has been moved and seconded by Trustee Smith Everett. I guess I'd like to note, Mr. President, I didn't catch this before now, my formal name is Gerald Lee Cross Jr., and I don't know if we need to amend the motion, or I plan to sign accordingly. I put Lee Cross on the ballot, it's super confusing, but it's simple. Kelsey doesn't even know the difference.
Yeah, I think the question is, do we need to amend the motion to have his formal name as how we will sign on it?
I don't think so, but I thought I'd ask. I just wanted to note.
It's authorizing you to sign, how you choose to sign it is up to you.
Yes, this is just listed as authorized sign.
Okay, fair enough. I didn't want some bar coming back at me, saying I didn't fully disclose.
I'm getting a nod from the corner over there.
Very good. Any discussion? Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say yea.
Yes.
Yea.
Those opposed, please say no. Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. Trustee Ingram.
Okay, the next order of business was a report from Janelle Vogler, Associate Vice President, Business Services, and includes five recommendations. The first is a single-source purchase report. This is regarding Dell computer equipment for faculty, staff, and student computer equipment, there are also additional Dell computer equipment needs for the remainder of the fiscal year. It is the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the single-source justification for computer equipment purchases in fiscal year 2022 to Dell for an amount of $650,000, and I so move, Mr. Chair.
Motion has been moved, any second.
Second.
A second.
I was giving it to.
Trustee Costin, I believe, beat Trustee Smith Everett, that's what I heard. Any discussion on this motion? All those in favor, please say yes.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. Trustee Ingram.
Ms. Vogler then presented for bid RFP recommendations. The first recommendation is regarding the gymnasium building roofing project. The purpose of this request for bid is to do the following, which is to furnish and install elastomeric roof coating system over the fieldhouse portion of the gymnasium, and to remove and install new drains with associated flashing inside the gymnasium. It is the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the low bid from Washington Roofing and Insulation in the amount of $127,033.92, with an additional 10% contingency of $12,703.39 to allow for possible unforeseen costs, and the low bid from Delta Innovative Services in the amount of $39,560, with an additional 10% contingency of $3,956 to allow for possible unforeseen costs for the gymnasium building roofing project for an estimated expenditure of $183,253.31, and I so move.
Second?
The motion has been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
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 All those opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously.
Okay, the second recommendation is regarding the FAD's photo shooting studio upgrade. The purpose of this request for bid is for the renovation of the photo shooting studio space from Room 106 in the Fine Arts and Design Studios building, to provide a ceiling within the space, which is currently exposed to the structure, to address the acoustic properties of the space. It is the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the low bid from Peritrave Innovations in the amount of $169,749 for the photo shooting studio upgrade in the FAD's building, with an additional 10% contingency of $16,974.90 to allow for possible unforeseen costs for a total estimated expenditure of $186,723.90, and again, I will make that motion.
Second?
Motion has been made and seconded, any discussion?
I'm counting up.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question about this one. I apologize, I do not remember it from Committee of the Whole, although I'm sure it was there. I just wanted a clarification, it says that it is a renovation for the exposed structure to address acoustic properties of the space, but it's for photo shooting upgrade, so I was just trying to understand how acoustics versus.
So it's also a video shooting lab, and because of the exposed structure, the sound in both rooms, the room above and that room are being used at the same time for the integrity of the video recording, they're getting sound that permeates to the lab, and so this will address the acoustical challenges in the room.
Thank you, that clarifies my questions.
And I'd be remiss, but I have Dr. Cook in my ear saying that a trustee must do their job with a critical eye, and I don't mean to grandstand or catch you here, Mr. President, but the difference between $169,749 and $316,000, the range in the bids is surprising. Is there, we're confident that this little bid is competent? I just wanted to ask, if somebody could address that?
Yes, I'll, the committee that reviewed the bids is very comfortable with the bid package and the provider of choice.
And then there's a contingency in place, should we go over?
That's correct.
Okay. I just, it caught my eye, I'm sorry to catch you. Any other discussion on this point? Seeing, hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
And those opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously.
Third recommendation is regarding active learning classroom remodel. The purpose of this request for bid is for the interior renovation of existing classrooms in multiple buildings, CEB, RC, and Science, across the main campus, which includes demolition of existing finished flooring, ceiling, and interior gypsum on metal stud partition walls. New work will include the laying of new carpet flooring, ceiling grid, jip on metal stud partition walls, case work, electrical and daddy upgrades, and mechanical modifications. In the recommendation, it is the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college. of Trustees accept the recommendation of the College Administration to approve the low bid from GPS KC in the amount of $359,236 for the active learning class remodel, with an additional 10% contingency of $35,923.60 to allow for possible unforeseen costs for a total estimated expenditure of $395,159.60, and I so move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to say I did get a tour of the classrooms that are looking to be renovated. Ed and Paul, that T team, helped me out with this. It was very impressive, great-looking classroom. I was better than anything I've ever worked in before, in any of my jobs I've ever had. As much as I liked them, we do have limited resources, and I'd like to remind us that we just raised tuition on the students, and I'd like to invest that money into the students instead of the classroom, and maybe push it back a year, is what I'm looking at.
Any others, thank you, Mr. Hamel, Mr. Trustee, any other comments, questions?
I've said.
Mr. President, I will say, I was part of that tour, and I thank you for your responsiveness to our questions and concerns, even when we disagree, such as, I wanted to keep the mask the rest of the semester. You and I debated that internally. You are very responsive and engaging, and I appreciate that. So all those in favor, please, go ahead.
I'm not sure, is that, are you making a comment, or is that an?
A motion.
A motion, are you going to amend?
I would, if anybody else is interested, otherwise, as my comment is now, I'm going to vote no the way it is, but.
I'm not sure if.
Yeah, if he's making an official motion, he'd have to.
I wasn't necessarily, unless somebody else was interested in what I was saying, so.
I would argue, Mr. Chair, that the environment where a student takes class, takes a class is affecting the student, and pretty profoundly. And by comparison, in K-12, what we have found at JCCC is, in many cases, our K-12 students are coming to us with experiences and better updated facilities than they have when they come to take classes here, and I think that the team that has worked to renovate some of these spaces is doing that out of a responsiveness to student and faculty input, that we have spaces that are frankly were built in the 60s and 70s and still look and feel like that, and it's not conducive to the kind of education we provide now. That's my comment. Also, Mr. Chair, just wanted to commend Trustee Ingram on the pronunciation of gypsum and gip on this recommendation, so I just wanted to publicly, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Trustee. Mr. President, Dr. Bound has brought it to my attention. Mr. Hamel, I didn't mean to blow past your potential motion. Is there any support for Trustee Hamel's motion? Was that a motion?
It was not, it was more a discussion, and it seemed what kind of response I got before any motion was necessarily made.
He was challenging me to be more responsive to you, I'm sorry that I wasn't.
You're good. I will make, I don't think my point was fully grasped, and I agree with everything Laura Smith Everett said, that was exactly right. My issue is that we have, when you're getting a job, I've never seen a place with three whiteboards in one building, television whiteboards, that I've worked, and I'm sure there's places out there. And again, I think it's great, and I believe about 25% of our classrooms have those, and I think we'll get exposure, if somebody's taking four classes on campus, they're likely to get that exposure, and they're more likely taking way more than four. So I think they'd get a chance to learn those things, we could bring those in, and I'm all for them, I want those on our campus. I just want to make sure we're not raising our tuition or taxes to cover those things when I don't know how much they're going to need them when they get their first job. Again, and I think they'll still get exposure with 25% of our classrooms having those, and I think they're great, they're wonderful, I'm impressed by them, I really am. I just do not want to see us raise tuition again, if anything, I'd like to see it lowered. I don't want to continue raising our taxes also along with that, and I want to make sure we're being fiscally responsible with it, and looking at maybe waiting a year before we approve them is what I'm looking at.
Thank you for those comments. Anything further, Mr. Trustee?
Thank you.
It sounded like somebody online.
I believe Trustee Coaston has a question. We'll go to her, and then I think Trustee Ingram had something. Trustee Coaston?
Thank you, Chairman. I was just going to interject that, again, I was going to kind of concur with what Trustee Laura Smith Everett said, that any investment we make in classroom enhancements gives our students an opportunity to see what's going on in the real world, and while they may not see it in their first job out of the chute, they might see it down the road, and so I think that it's in our best interest as a college to make sure that we are always on the cutting edge of giving students the most robust education that they deserve, and so I will be supporting this particular recommendation.
Thank you, Madam Trustee. Anything further, Trustee Coaston?
No.
And seeing, hearing, no other discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
And those opposed?
No.
And for any relevant record, mine is yes. The motion passes five to one?
Yes.
The next item, Trustee Ingram, please.
Are you ready? This is the fourth and final recommendation, from the Business Services Report.
Needed anticipation.
And this is regarding the rooftop solar PV design and installation. The purpose of this request for proposal is for solar photovoltaic PV systems to be installed on the roofs of two buildings, WCMT and WLB, based on available roof space for solar arrays on each building. The college is looking for long-term energy solutions with the intent to maximize the value via a design-build approach, where the recommended firm will provide the design and engineering specs based on specific PV solar sizes. Bidders were provided $500,000 maximum budget to be used to provide the best long-term value for PV production without impeding the safety and maintenance of the roof and other systems on the roof. This system will tie into the respective builder's electrical system with the intent of entering a parallel generation agreement with EverGee. It is the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the College Administration to approve the proposal for MC Power for rooftop solar PV design and installation for a total expenditure not to exceed $463,691.98 for the design and installation of rooftop solar PV systems to be installed on the roofs of the WCMT and WLB buildings. And I would make that motion.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I wanted to just make a comment that I applaud our community college, who many years ago chose to begin to add solar in a phase-by-phase approach, so that, what I've learned over the last two years essentially is, we don't, we didn't just buy four rooftops worth of solar all at the same time, we phased them in cycles because we know that the life of them will phase out, and as new technology comes on, the newer solar are even more efficient and effective than the previous, and I applaud our sustainability team, who pushed that we really be an independent electrical source for ourselves, and Dr. Bound, you had a figure the other day that we've saved.
The cost avoidance, right, we've, since we started this process of adding solar panels, we've also expanded the footprint of our campus, and even in that increase in need for electricity, our usage of electricity has reduced over that period of time, and the cost avoidance related to the solar and related electrical upgrades has been roughly $8 million in that time period.
So thank you for that, I appreciate that. I just want to applaud our efforts and the ways in which we continue to be really innovative and forward-thinking in our energy independence, so thank you for that.
You're very welcome. I concur with you, obviously. Any other discussion?
I would just make one comment in addition to that, that kind of related to what you said earlier, you know, our students, this is what they're learning too in high school, and I know there's a sustainability program in the Alath School District, we've talked about that before, it's one of their 21st century programs, so I think being responsive and innovative is extremely important, so I appreciate this as well, so thank you.
They also feed our academic program here at the college as well, so.
Absolutely.
And I'll take this opportunity to say that it's not only our sustainability team and all the professors here, but also past administrations and trustees who voted for this. We thank them for their leadership. All those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously.
With that final recommendation, the Committee of the Whole report is concluded, Mr. Chair.
And I believe the Committee of the Whole working agenda is on page 13 and?
14.
14 of the board packet, and I find those helpful to look at for all of our public or anybody watching, in terms of what the Committee of the Whole does and what our purpose is, so. Any other questions for Trustee Ingram? Thank you very much. Our next item on the agenda is for the President's Recommendations for Actions Beginning with the Treasurers Report. Trustee Smith Everett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Your Treasurers Report can be found on pages 15 through 27 of your packet. The board packet includes the Treasurers Report for the month ending January 31st, 2022. Some items of note include, on page one, which I think would be page 15, is a general post-secondary technical education fund summary. January was the seventh month of the college's 2122 fiscal year. The college's general fund unencumbered cash balance was $137.1 million as of January 31st, 2022, and expenditures in the primary operating fund are within approved budgetary limits. It is the recommendation of the College Administration that the Board of Trustees approve the Treasurers Report for the month ended January 31st, 2022, subject to audit, and I will make that motion.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any discussion on Trustee Smith Everett's report? And seeing none online, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously, and I believe that concludes, does that conclude your report, Trustee?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, it does conclude the matter.
The next item on our agenda is the monthly report to the Board by Mr. President, Dr. Andy Bound.
All right, well, thank you very much, trustees. I just, as I begin my report, and I think you're going to advance the slides for me as we go, is that, all right, perfect, thank you, Jason. In Mr. Carter's report, he referenced the CDL opportunity and potential grant funding that we would be seeking moving forward, that was about $2.5 million. What that would allow us to do is to have our own driving range and facility. Today, we lease and we use driving facilities that are available when they're available to us, which limits our ability to expand a high-wage, high-demand, high-value career program for folks. And so, I, my, in working with Elisa Wallman and Mike Neal and others, certainly, the operating cost of the program will grow with the program, but it'll be covered by the proceeds of the program. So this is a one-time need for us to expand a program that will lead to well-paying jobs. So we'll wait and see what happens with that from a funding standpoint, but that from our standpoint, as we look to the future, what's a high priority need for us in responding to the business community, and therefore to all of us, so our products can get to us when we need them, that's, I wanted you to be aware of that, so. All right, here we go, all right. Student, you met our group of students, and we could advance to the agenda, hold it there for a second. I also want to draw attention to another group of students on campus, and that's our honors program, and specifically the group Phi Theta Kappa. They recently went to national conferences, and again this year, they were recognized as a five-star chapter, meaning it's the highest level of recognition for Phi Theta Kappa or PTK chapter. And so, in addition to that, they were recognized for their project work and for their collaboration with other community colleges, specifically Kansas City, Kansas Community College, and then a number of students received recognition for their writing and artistic work. Jennifer Logback, Hannah Hemantel, Ida Janer, and Caitlin Sai were all recognized for their work, and I apologize if I mispronounce your names, but please know that the recognition that you receive from Phi Theta Kappa is recognized certainly by us here. All right, so if we jump in, you saw our fantastic students this evening, and we got to have some good time with them. If we jump in and look at now enrollment, enrollment is pretty much locked in now for the balance of this semester at down 5.6%. Both headcount and credit hours have aligned this semester, they don't always, but they have this semester. As I've explained in previous meetings, where we are down more noticeably from an enrollment standpoint, female students, non-degree-seeking students, and previously attended and transfers in. If we look at where we're up, however, our evening courses are up, enrollment for evening courses up dramatically, and a nice increase in first-time students, that's a good sign for us. Developmental reading courses are up, and specifically, our Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander students are up, and our Hispanic and Latino students are basically flat. Oh, let's see, so that's from a credit standpoint. I want to switch now again and talk now about continuing education enrollment, this is where we've continued to see the growth. Next slide. We are at 5,506 students as of yesterday, and the annual goal was 5,500. So I have lovingly and politely accused Elisa Wallman and the team of sandbagging, but no, they, I mean, if you look at where we were a year ago, it was a reasonable goal when they set the goal last spring. Having said that, they're up, they're 138% over they were in 2020, 157% over this time last year, and are well on track to blow past their goal for this year, not only from a headcount standpoint, but from a revenue standpoint. And I applaud the group for their work in, working very hard to grow enrollment where the opportunities are there. If we look at other, other forms of non-credit instruction, not specific to continuing to add, our CLEAR program, which is a program that serves students, I think 18 and older, up to about, well into adulthood. They don't age out on the Saturday program, which is a program that our son Michael is in. Their enrollment, last year, when you look at class by class, was about 700, they're just short of 900 courses, right? So looking at duplicate enrollment, often the students on those Saturdays programs are taking four classes in a semester, so the numbers aren't headcount, they're courses, but it's, they're running a really strong, really strong program, so wanted to draw your attention there. I also though wanted to talk, if we'll advance now, to a couple other metrics, that we talk a lot about enrollment, and we have to pay very good attention to enrollment and get deliberate about how we're going to increase retention, which increases enrollment, and to look at the opportunities to bring students in, either bring them back to us or first time with us, to help our enrollment grow. One of the areas that we have to pay very close attention to is retention, and term-to-term, or in this case, fall-to-spring retention. And so, we spend a lot of time talking about the number of enrollment, but I also want to talk about the other drivers, and one of them is retention. And so, you know, this phenomenon of decline in enrollment over the COVID period is not at all unique to us, and we're pleased to see that the fall-to-spring enrollment for full-time students increased slightly, comparing this past fall to the previous fall, looking at fall-to-spring for full-time students, and saw a 2% increase in our part-time students. And noticing that we have a very large contingent of part-time students, that is, is a. of part-time students, that is, is a really good, a good improvement. Now, you'll see that it's, that number's bounced around a lot, but we have seen, I think during this COVID period, it's, it's important to note that. We slide then to the next slide, which is the last slide of my report. I also wanted us to look at completions, because it's important that we get students in the front door. It's important that we keep them while they're here. It's also important that we work towards helping students successfully complete with Johnson County Community College. So the number on the left are the number of graduates, and the numbers on the right are the number of credentials awarded. And you might ask, well, why don't those two numbers add up to be the same number? Well, it's because students in the same year can earn multiple credentials. They may earn a certificate as well as an associate degree. To me, a number that I look at is not only how are we doing from an associate degree production, but how are we doing from a certificate standpoint? And, and a trend that we've seen in recent years nationally is an increase in the number of certificates, right? It's a shorter-term credential for students to earn. And so, again, these are credit completions. And so, certificates this year compared to last year at this point in the year, right? So we're talking about students who completed at the end of the fall semester, the number of certificates increased by 36%. Overall, the number increased 10%. Why is that important? Because it's important that we look not just at the front end of the funnel, but we look at the whole process and the life of a student with us. And so, we're looking at not only enrollment, but we're looking at how are students doing when they're with us? Are they progressing? Are they persisting? I would say the other piece we need to look at is progression. Are they progressing appropriately in their programs? Retaining students for the sake of retaining students isn't always in their best interest. Generally, retention is exactly where we need to be looking at. But we want retention or from a student perspective persistence with progression. And the outcome is, are they graduating? Are they graduating or are they transferring? And the good news is, even in a declining period, we have seen, because the decline in enrollment didn't start this past year. It's been a multi-year trend. We're seeing, you know, pre-pandemic, we saw a nice increase, even though enrollment was slipping some, completions was growing. And we're seeing now, at this later stage in COVID, that while enrollment isn't where we'd like it to be, completions through mid-year are improving. And that, to me, is a good sign. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Bound. Any questions for Dr. Bound? Trustee Smith Everett, and I don't know if there's anybody on Zoom.
You don't know if what?
Anybody?
If there are any questions on Zoom.
Yeah. So, going to that point about students progressing.
Yep.
Do we have data collection on what students' goals are? Because one of the things that really strikes me is when you compare our part-time to full-time, we're really seeing an increase of retention in our full-time students, but our part-time, I mean, that was, I think, eight years of that. But we, we have spoken several times about really needing to get students a clear track of knowing what they should be progressing towards. My guess, just my gut, would be that that is probably a majority of our part-time students who are kind of dabbling in doing a thing, finishing a degree, so forth and so on. I wondered if we collect or know how they should be progressing so that we can then keep track of where they should be, because it seems like that's kind of a gap.
So that's part of the impetus. Last month, you approved the academic planning tool.
Mm-hmm.
That is a major component of that, of knowing what is the student's plan and being able to track that more successfully. We know that students with an academic plan are more likely to persist and are more likely to complete.
And we'll be able to track within the system if they're making progress, progress as they move along. And then, would that, that is for both full-time and part-time students, that, that tool will be used for that?
It will be for every student that has an academic plan. And that, I mean, that in itself is a challenge, right?
Right.
But that is, it will help us do that, and it will also provide us with much more information to better schedule, to plan, and so forth. It offers a great deal of benefit beyond having a slick tool to help students.
Mm-hmm.
Well beyond that.
I appreciate that. I want to say that I think it's really important that we have compulsory academic counseling. I think when you are at a community college serving a very large county, we have students who come in, know the system, and know how to pursue what they need, because for those students, usually, they have someone in their family who's been through college and knows the system. We then have another portion of the county, which is most of the students I serve in my K-12 job, who come to school and know that it's a thing and have heard about it and want to do it, and come and take one or two courses, fail, or don't do as well as they think, and they're done. Because we have no way to catch them and say, here's the system, here's how it works, and here's how we can help you through it, you know, give you the support you need. And I think that's one of the most important critical parts of community college equity measures, that we are talking about servicing both those kinds of students, because they both come to us. The other thing I wondered is if we track our website traffic. Do we?
We do.
Do we have measures to know if we're having an uptick in people looking at then when that little enrollment tab, or if we are comparing it? Do we have any good sense if that's increasing or if we're getting more traffic?
So Chris Gray, our Vice President for Marketing and Strategic Communications, is not with us this evening. And so, we can get more information to, but the short and simple answer is yes. We know that. We know where the clicks, we know where the click-throughs are. We know the activity on our website, and we know what's drawing and what's not drawing.
Okay.
We also know that about social media and that impact. So, we have much more information than we may have had in the past.
Okay. I'd be curious, I'd like to know if we have an uptick, you know, on the, on our website, because that's often how the first way people shop. And I, I was helping a neighbor with some enrollment, and I'm going to just be honest, our website's a little tricky. And so, you know, and I've got a master's degree, and I'm struggling to help her with her students' enrollment. So, you know, I, I hope we can capture those students that come on and are already overwhelmed by how our system integrates with enrollment and make sure we can capture them so they know that JCCC is a great place for them to come. That concludes my comments.
Any other, thank you, Trustee Smith Everett. Any other comments, questions?
We do have, and now I forget, there we go. I think it was Trustee Ratan.
Trustee Ratan.
I have two questions. The first is, do you have our projected completion for spring of 2021?
I don't off the top of my head, in terms of projected completions for this, at the end of spring semester. We're just in the process now where students are applying for graduation, which by the way, is intended to be an in-person commencement ceremony this year. Apparently, we do those here. I've never seen one.
Me neither.
But yes.
The second question, I, and I know we've probably reviewed this, however, I've forgotten, could you remind me of our top three to five reasons why we're finding that students do not come back? The top three to five reasons for retention gaps, and is there crossover between part-time and full-time students on why they leave?
Dr. Weber, would you want to take a stab at that? I'll give you my perspective, but you're closer to it than I am, so.
Hi, Randy Weber, Executive Vice President, Student Success and Strategy. To answer the question, we do not do non-returning student data survey. They're very hard to do and execute. Across the country where it is done, and what we're hearing a lot anecdotally, is a lot of students don't return because of life incidents that, and we're seeing more and more of that during the COVID impact, is balancing school as we know it today with the lives that they have has become a major challenge for many. So, when they start, they'll say it's not the experience. We are hearing a lot of, well, maybe when you come back to face-to-face for my programs, that would be a more appropriate time for me to come back. So, so the short answer is, we don't have good, strong numbers around non-returning students. We have discussed survey in that, but we, most any response we give would be anecdotal.
President Weber.
I know it sounds like it's hard to go get, but I mean, how do we attack an issue if we don't have root cause, if we don't have even a partial root cause? And I love getting the data, but we need some kind of data from our population as well. I feel that we need that. That's the end of my comments.
Thank you, Trustee Ratan. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Weber, if you may, if I may, Vice President Weber. You said something two or three months ago. It's, I think about it every day as I watch news. There's simply jobs available.
Yeah.
I come back to that as a touchstone. I think the economy's in flux as we see Eastern and other money perhaps pull out on the general economy, but is that right? The jobs are still available.
Yeah. So, so part of our, our discussions around enrollment institutionally haven't always necessarily been about non-returning students. When we talk a bit about retention, it's non-enrolling, whether it's returning or not. What we know historically about community college students, right, is right out of high school, what we're looking at is college readiness, affordability, dual credit, things like that. So how do we make ourselves a first-choice institution or increase our college-going culture is more of our strategy for right out of high school. A big portion of what community college serve, though, are adult students. And adult students tend to attend community college at large rates because they want to improve their lot in life. And what we know about employment rates in Johnson County right now is if you're looking for a better job, there's probably a better job out there. And we know employers are being a lot more lax on their job requirements because it's an employee's workforce, not an employer's workforce. And so, the need to come to a community college to skill up, to get that next job, isn't as prevalent today as it has been in the past, or most likely like it will be in the future. So we're weathering a little bit of that storm of very low unemployment locally and it being an employees' market, because we usually, we do receive that enrollment from adult students when, when they can't get that job they're looking for.
I thank you for that, and I just wanted you to reiterate it. It is rented space in my head, and I will just recognize Trustee Smith Everett's comments, that the best law students invariably in law school were the sons or daughters of lawyers. Like, they had that in-house counseling to prepare and test. So, thank you, Dr. Weber. Any other questions?
Trustee Ratan has her hand up. I don't know if it's still.
Trustee Ratan, do you, do you have another question?
I do have another question. How does our retention benchmark against other colleges in, say, the League of Innovation or other colleges that we do benchmark ourselves against?
Yeah. Candidly, yes. Candidly, when you look at our retention rates, when you compare against other community colleges, league certainly, if we look at, if you look at, for example, if you look at the chart that was there that shows a benchmark, if you will, the benchmark or target is based on the 75th percentile. So if you look at community colleges, there are 25% of the colleges who are performing at that for full-time students, 85% retention from fall to spring for full-time students, and we are at just above 82%. And, and if, and I don't know if you can easily bring that slide back up, so I can just talk through it again, so I'm not just talking about lines that aren't easy to see. If you look at that, that black line across the top of the chart on both the full-time, that's on the left, and the part-time on the right, you'll see that, that both of those are set at the 75th percentile, right? So, the part-time students is 66%, the full-time students is 85%. That's, that's where the 75th percentile, so, right? We're lagging below, we're behind where, you know, the top quartile of community colleges are. And so, you know, where we do shine is transfer, right? When we look at transfer and transfer and completions, we actually do very well. And the results of the work over time, and frankly, if you look at, at the full-time student retention rate over time, pre-pandemic, this college was making very good strides at catching up to where the best community colleges are in the country, and that should be applauded. That, that we, we've held that standard as that's what we're shooting for. For when the goal was set prior to my coming here, at the 75th percentile, that was at that point in time, 85%. And so, that's what, that's why you see that consistent black line, so that we're not chasing something that's always moving, we're trying to hit a, a stationary target, if you will. And so, that tells you where we're at, folks. That tells you we've got work to do. And, and again, somewhat, and I'm not going to say this as an excuse, but in a state where the associate degree is not highly valued, getting to completion, the other chart, is more challenging, because a student's going to go, look, if I'm interested in getting to the four-year, to the baccalaureate institution, my interest is getting there as reasonably fast as possible, right? And so, if I can get what I need to get there, I'm going to get it and go. Until we have an environment here in the state of Kansas, where earning the associate degree is your easy access to the four-year institution, we're going to continue to chase that. And so, you know, that, that number, those numbers factor in, students who are leaving before earning an associate degree. I mean, we had, we had a prime example of that, and this will speak to one of the challenges that we face. Last week, I was asked to write a letter of recommendation for one of our former students, who's applying for an honors college opportunity for a baccalaureate program. He has a 3.89 GPA, very good student with us, has been on the president's list, meaning he's had a 4.0 with 12 credits or more multiple times. He's been on the dean's list when he hasn't been on the president's list. He's a good student. He hasn't graduated from us. Why hasn't he graduated from us? Because he's struggled with mathematics. And he's taken intermediate algebra on two different occasions and not been successful in that course, to the extent that which he dropped the course rather than finished the course. He's transferring without an associate degree to this institution. It's an out-of-state institution, because he's relocated. But here's an example of a student who ought to have earned an associate degree. Now, I could communicate with him and say, look, after talking to our registrar and looking at your schedule, go get that math class. When you get that, you can transfer that back to us and reverse transfer and still earn the associate degree. He was thrilled to hear that. I said, now, you need to talk to folks beyond me. You're just talking to the president, who can, you know, doesn't always get things right, but this is what I was told. Go get the math class, come back, transfer it back, earn the associate degree from Johnson County Community College, and then continue your path, because once you've earned it, nobody can take it away. And so, you know, we know that we get students that get caught in remedial education and don't progress out of that. He's a prime example of that. Excellent student, 3.89, Johnson County Community College GPA. He's a good student. Struggles with math.
I'm going to be really honest. That brings up more concerns to me about our student that, that is that good failing in our math twice.
He hasn't failed it twice, he withdrew twice.
Well, you're withdrawing because you can see the writing on the wall, that a community college should find a way to serve those students.
And, and I think that's the work that we've been, the conversation we've been having with the math department, to help work them through, help them work through that, to help us come up with solutions that we can close that gap, so there are fewer students that get caught in the quandary that he finds himself in. And again, I didn't, I didn't bring that up as a, as an example of, of, hey, math department, you better get it together. That was not at all my intent here. My intent is, we have students that aren't completing with us. It would make perfect sense for them to complete with us before they move on. But in the state of Kansas, we don't. But in the state of Kansas, we don't place the emphasis on the associate degree. Again, that's not a cap-out, that's a practical reality that we face.
Any other questions for President Bound? Seeing none, the next item, thank you, Dr. Bound. The next item on our agenda is new business. Does anyone have any new business to bring up? Hearing, seeing none, move on to old business. I don't believe there's any old business, Dr. Bound.
That's correct.
The next item is the consent agenda. Is there any item anybody would like to pull off of the consent agenda, which can be found in our board packet, and I believe that we went through at the Committee of the Whole? Hearing or seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
Motion.
Second.
The motion has been moved by Trustee Smith Everett and seconded by Trustee Ingram. Any discussion? Hearing, seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying yea.
Yea.
All those opposed, please say nay. Motion passes unanimously. The next item on our agenda is the executive, excuse me, what did I do?
Could I mention something before we take that motion?
Sure.
Regarding executive session? And I apologize, I wanted to go back to the KACC report. I specifically contacted Dr. Bound today to ask him if I could make a comment, and I failed to make it. So I want to go back to it. And that is that I have seen continued requests for data throughout, I don't know when. But once again, there was a data request that came through earlier this week, and it said on it urgent. And I just want to extend a thank you on behalf of all of us to those out there who are acquiring information for us. As Mr. Carter said, things are moving quickly, but when I see something that says urgent, I'm not involved in it, I just get a copy of it because I am the president of the organization. But I just continue to marvel at the fact that things are requested at an urgent level so that Heather can advocate on behalf of all of us and put this information together. So I, I'm remiss in not saying that during my report, I just wanted to include it, so thank you.
No, I thank you.
Thank you.
And I appreciate, frankly, appreciate the, the patience of the trustees and I, I can understand and appreciate the desire for information and evidence. I work in a field where we, we demand it. And yet, on another organization whose boards I sit on, there's this continuous demand and command for data. And it's in the book Moneyball, Mr. President, that they talk about how organizations need to compile data and begin counting things to understand and analyze them, but it, it frankly is a point of privilege and, and money that it takes to compile that data. So I, I just wanted to say from my perspective, I thank you on behalf of the board for all the work that you and your staff do to respond to us and, and get information for us, because it's, it's hard to track why every last student leaves college. It's, it's, it's a good question, it's just also difficult to do and to put money and people toward it, so I thank you for that.
If I could add to that, please?
Yes, please.
Again, this is, they, they come often in the form of a request from Heather Morgan from KACC, but sometimes they'll come to Heather Morgan in the form of a legislative request. And so there have been a number of those this year, this legislative cycle, and our team across the college, whether it's in finance, whether it's in financial aid, whether it's in student success, whether it's in academic affairs, you name it, the team is working hard to pull that data together to respond to the questions that are being raised of us to help folks advocate for or understand the important work of community colleges. So, again, I want to echo my appreciation for teams and individuals that drop something to make something else happen or to meet a timeline of a request that comes in, and, and it's, it's greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
I left one thing off my report, and that is, trustees, you have at your, your spots the League for Innovation reaffirmation report. We, I, I was able to present today to the board for the League of Innovation, our request for reaffirmation. It's a, a three-step process, if you will. You submit a report, we did that, thanks to a whole lot of folks, you know, and I'll call out the, the, led by a, a team of, of Chris Gray and Randy Weber. But this was submitted in December. I had the opportunity to present briefly on it today, and then was excused from the board meeting while they deliberated, and they came back and said, we would very much appreciate it if Johnson County would move forward in the process. So on April 12th, and you've got holds on your calendars, and you will hear from, you'll get a doodle poll request tomorrow from Terry asking for an hour of your time in groups of two or three to do some prep work for their visit on April 12th. So we can do it by Zoom, we can do it in person, but we want you to feel well-prepared for the time you'll spend with the site team from various league board colleges. So with that, I will now really stop my report.
That's quite all right. You run the college. Any other questions for Dr. Bound before I ask for a motion to go into executive session? Seeing none, I would like to entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of consultation with our legal counsel regarding pending personnel matter, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. Now, action will be taken during this session. The executive session will last for about 45 minutes, beginning at what time do we think, Mr. President? For anyone?
Seven twenty-five.
That's fine by me. Beginning, Ms. Nazar, is that all right with you?
Seven twenty-five.
Seven twenty-five, and then ending at, would it be 8:10? Yes.
Eight.
Okay.
Yes.
State school math, thank you. And ending at 8:10 PM, at which time, open session will resume at this location for those present in person and by Zoom, by the Zoom video conference for the rest. We'd like to invite Dr. Bound to participate, Dr. Mickey McLeod, Dr. Leslie Harden, and Kelsey Nazar to join this executive session. May I please have that motion?
So moved. Second.
The trustee Ingram made the motion, and trustee Smith Everett seconded. At this time, we will adjourn into executive session.
We need a vote on it.
Oh.
Yep.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, and by Zoom, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed? Motion's been approved. Thank you. We will adjourn into executive session at this time and reconvene at 8:10 PM here. Thank you. We're back here at the March 2022 Johnson County Board of Trustees meeting. We have returned from executive session in which there has been no action. We discussed a personnel matter under the attorney-client privilege. I believe now, may I entertain a motion?
Correct.
To adjourn.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by trustee Smith Everett and seconded by trustee Ingram. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yea.
Yea.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously, four to, five to zero. We have trustee Ratan on the line.
All right.
Thank you all very much. We'll see you at the Committee of the Whole later this morning.
Who made the motion and seconded?
I made the motion.
Smith Everett.
Ingram made the second.
Thank you.[1777.11]